Good morning and welcome to our bi-monthly press briefing with Council President Tom Hucker and Council Vice President Gabe Albernaz. For the press who are joining us today, thank you very much for coming to be with us today on this snowy February morning, another one. If you have a question for Dr. Crowell, the Council Vice President, or the Council President, please raise your hand and we will get to you during the media briefing so you can ask your question. So now I'll turn it over to the Council President for some opening remarks.
Thank you so much, Susan. It's great to be joined by Council Vice President Albernaz and Dr. Crowell from HHS as usual. Let me start with some good news. I know we all could use some. First, the Biden administration has committed to sending 13.5 million doses of the COVID-19 vaccine per week to states across the nation, which is up from 11 million. The number of doses sent to pharmacies across the country is also expected to double to 2 million per week. Second, in our community, CCI Health and Wellness Services has been selected to be the first location in Maryland to participate in the Biden administration's initiative to increase Corona vaccine distribution in hard-hit areas. CCI has locations in Gaithersburg, Silver Spring, and Tacoma Park. They do a fantastic job. I've visited their offices and tracked their good work for years, and they serve both Montgomery and Prince George's counties and reach some of our hardest-hit populations. So this is very much welcome news in addition. The administration's Health Center COVID-19 Vaccine Program is targeting 250 health centers across the country to help complement local vaccine efforts for vulnerable populations. We congratulate CCI and look forward to these increased vaccination efforts for our medically underserved residents. And third, I wanted to just share that yesterday I attended the vaccination of 100-year-old World War II veteran Harvey Ziegler, who was one of the first of 750 residents to get their vaccines at the East County Services Center. Dr. Crowell was there as well and the county executive. I wish you all could have seen it, honestly, because it reflected exactly why our county health department in Montgomery County and around the state are doing the best job of all the delivery methods and deserve our fair share of doses without doses being siphoned off for the for-profit distribution centers. The line of folks at the East County Services Center was all seniors, nearly all black-and-brown residents, the ones that are at the greatest risk, the ones who have been hit the hardest by the pandemic. And this occurred in my district in 20904, one of our 10 hardest-hit ZIP codes. They were not the youngest, they were not the fittest residents we have, and with all due respect to them, I don't think they were the residents who are the fastest at registering on multiple web forums to line up multiple appointments. They were exactly the residents we should be vaccinating and reaching, and they were there because they're at the greatest risk. And our HHS department and our nonprofit providers did a great job of getting the word out to line up all those appointments. Those are exactly the folks who we should be vaccinating. And if all distribution networks were doing the same thing, we would not have the disparities and the inequity that we've seen in this vaccination rollout. The trouble is, we could be vaccinating 10 times as many residents if our doses were not getting siphoned off by MDH for the for-profit distribution centers, for small rural counties that have fewer cases, and also for the mass vaccination sites that are many miles from Montgomery County. For Maryland to send limited vaccination doses to those private providers creates this not just a chaotic system, but inequities that persist in the distribution rollout. Our residents are very frustrated and angry at the state's system, which continues to be chaotic and confusing, and we're very frustrated as well. We continue to ask Governor Hogan to set up a centralized registration system to give us our fair share of doses per capita and to provide a mass vaccination site in Montgomery County, the largest county in Maryland. DHHS has offered the state locations, including the agricultural fairgrounds in Gaithersburg and other locations as well. Making our residents drive to Six Flags in Prince George's while Baltimore City gets two mass vaccination locations is not fair or equitable, and it's poor public health policy. It limits access to those who don't drive and completely eliminates access to the vaccine for those who can't take hours off of work to make the trip. We've been hit the hardest by COVID-19 right behind Prince George's. We have most deaths in the state, but the vaccination response from Maryland does not show it. And we raised all these issues with the acting deputy secretary when she was in front of the council just a few weeks ago. I haven't seen any progress on many of the issues that were raised at that time. I also want to mention the Maryland Relief Act. I'm glad that the Maryland General Assembly moved swiftly to approve $1 billion in financial assistance to hard-hit families and small businesses through the Relief Act. I want to recognize the efforts of our county delegation and thank them for working with Governor Hogan and the House and Senate leadership as well. I worked, many of you know, with a whole coalition we put together of elected officials, nonprofits, and hard-hit small businesses to call for this relief act. The House and Senate made it considerably better than the governor sent it over, and I'm glad to report that there are immediate stimulus payments of $500 for families, $300 for individuals who filed for the EITC in 2019. It also increases the state's EITC by 28% to 45% for three years. It also provides sales tax credits of up to $3,000 for three months for our hard-hit small businesses as well. I wish the package were larger. The state has quite a large reserve fund and a surplus, but this is certainly better than nothing and welcome relief for our hard-hit families and small businesses. I want to encourage all residents to check their eligibility for the financial relief by going to marylandtaxes.gov-relief/reliefact or calling 833-345-0787 for questions. And we have several town halls coming up this week. I'll leave it to my colleagues to share the information on those as well as a lot of other public health-related updates. And we have a Shady Grove Minor Master Plan Amendment Tuesday at 1:30, a hearing on that, which is aimed at helping the county continue our commitment to smart growth principles and generating additional affordable housing by focusing on land use and zoning recommendations around the Shady Grove Metro Station. Let me stop there and turn it over to Council Vice President Albernaz.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. You covered all the important bases there. Look forward to answering questions. I'll just highlight two issues for all of you. One, this Thursday at 3 o'clock, we will be having a joint Education and Culture and Health and Human Services Committee session regarding the reopening of schools. We will be hearing from our colleagues in MCPS to elaborate on their plan. There will also be representatives from our Department of Health and Human Services and Public Health team to assist in the briefing, but also provide context in explaining how holistically we must continue to work together as an entire community to ensure that schools open and that they open safely and that they stay open as we go through the various waves of the virus. The other is that last week, our office of consumer protection issued an alert to our residents highlighting fraud cases that are on the rise related specifically to the dissemination of the vaccine. We encourage all residents to remain diligent, and there is no cost to receiving the vaccine regardless of where you get it. And so anyone that receives information requesting their credit card information or any sort of payment should immediately, that should raise a red flag. And certainly, if their request for personal information such as social security information, that also would not be required to be able to access the vaccine. If you are concerned or have a question regarding a phone call or correspondence you have received that you believe is suspicious, please contact 311, and it will be referred to by the appropriate authorities and we'll be able to respond to confirm whether or not the correspondence you've received is accurate. So with that, Susan, I defer back to you, and I believe Dr. Crowell is next.
Yes, Dr. Crowell, would you like to provide us with an update, please?
Happy to, and good morning, everyone. I want to do a couple of things to talk a little bit about. First, the good news is that our daily case rate is at 12.3 per 100,000 and still dropping, going in the right direction. And our test positivity rate is at 3.9%, which is not quite where it was back in mid-summer and early fall, but it is going in that direction. So those are two good indicators that we are past the holiday and turn-of-the-year spike. Hopefully, that trend will continue. We definitely need it to. Not quite where it needs to be in terms of positivity rates, but it's getting there. In terms of vaccinations, as of close of business Friday, Montgomery County residents had 127,891 Montgomery County residents had received their first doses, and 50,681 of them were fully vaccinated. Those numbers have changed a little bit over the weekend, but the state hasn't updated the numbers. I don't know that they actually have them yet to update at this point. We canceled a couple of clinics last week due to last week's weather, and they were rescheduled into Saturday and Sunday. So on Saturday, we completed a total of about 1,700 vaccinations, 1,100 first doses and 605 second doses. It took our weekly total for vaccination to 10,812 doses last week, all for the last 70 period, 4,300 first doses and some 5,000-plus second doses. Our total to date as of Saturday was 64,434 Moderna vaccines that Montgomery County Public Health Office and associated partners of fire and rescue had completed first doses for, first and second doses combined since we started receiving vaccines and started vaccinating. On Sunday, we did a total of 1,722 doses, some 550 of those at the East County Rec Center and the balance at Quinnsoritch High School on Dennis Avenue. East County, the site that Council President Hucker referenced a moment or two ago, was a deliberate effort on our part to bring the vaccine closer to communities that have the hardest hit in the county and to make it more easily accessible to residents, older residents in that community. We had a really good turnout, and it was good partnership between community partners, our director of our regional service center and REC and Departments of Recreation. And a special thanks to vaccine hunters who were with us on-site all day, showed up to help us manage the flow of residents coming to the site and in getting people preregistered. As Council President Hucker pointed out, we vaccinated, had the honor of vaccinating Mr. Harvey Ziegler, a centenarian, who was born and raised in Montgomery County and lived his whole life here and has been an incredible part of the community. It was honored to have him there, and there is, I think, the media, number of media outlets came to cover that for us, so it was a nice thing to see. He was vaccinated by Dr. George's Benjamin, who is the chief executive officer of the American Public Health Administration and a leading national spokesperson on the need for equity in vaccinations and on the need to make sure that we get vaccinations out the door as quickly as possible. The weather delays last week have resulted in some delays in deliveries of doses both last week and for our doses for this week coming up. We are, the state gave us a notice that they were delayed, and it's all across the country. The states are experiencing delays just due to the weather. We're not sure quite when those doses will arrive. We currently have about 2,400 doses available in our public health setting, and we have clinic scheduled for today and tomorrow, and we are projecting about 1,200 doses today and likely an equal number tomorrow. Beyond that, if we don't have our doses, if the weather continues to delay the doses, we may have to reschedule appointments, and we will reschedule appointments for anybody that we've scheduled up for that we have to cancel because we don't have supply in hand. There's a winter advisory out for today, and while we have, we want to let people know that we are still open for vaccinations, but advise people to drive and travel safely. If they arrive late for their timed appointment, we will still be there, and we'll still be able to get their vaccine. Persons who don't wish to travel, don't feel safe traveling, can call 240-777-1755 to reschedule their appointment. And then finally, my closing point, our testing numbers across the county continue to drop, and it's important. We need to make sure that people continue to test as well as maintain safety. Testing is how we track the spread of the virus, and if people aren't getting tested, then we don't know where the virus is going next until cases start showing up at the hospital or the emergency rooms. It helps us to identify the hotspots where the risk is greatest and guides our vaccination efforts. So please want to encourage people to continue to get tested and stay safe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Crowell. Very informative update there. We're going to open it up to questions now from the media. The first question comes from Kate Ryan from WTOP. Kate?
Thank you. I just wanted to check in on the need for or the not need for a larger centralized mass vaccination site. Again, I know in the push for it, part of the issue is if you don't have additional vaccines, how would a mass vaccination site help? And is there no evidence that by putting these at some of the pharmacies that are in neighborhoods, you might be helping the people who don't drive or can't get to a large central area? How does that work?
Dr. Crowell?
So the request that has been made and discussion we were in around mass vaccination sites have to presume that the state would do what it has done in other sites, and that is it would allocate doses from the state supply to those sites. So that would give us some additional doses to be distributed in Montgomery County beyond what the current allocations have been to hospitals or pharmacies or to public health. So that increase in doses would increase the scheduling, would increase. There are some concerns about that that we can get into at some point, but I think it does give us an additional venue for doses. And as for the pharmacies, there is certainly, I think, hope and desire that putting vaccinations out through pharmacies and local grocery stores would increase access and availability. But we are not privy at the county level to how that process is going and to whether or not there is an equitable distribution effort, or it is simply still a first-come, first-served process. Well, it is still first-come, first-served as far as we can tell at this point, as is are the mass vaccination sites. So we don't have any data on the impact of that at the state and/or county level.
Kate, I would just, it's not an either-or. We need both a mass vaccination site as well as our pharmacies. The practical reality logistically within our pharmacies is they can only serve, you know, a handful of people at a time because of the logistics within their places of business. And if we have the infrastructure for a mass vaccination site that we can then maximize as more vaccines become available, it will put us in an even better position moving forward to bring down the numbers. And it just does not make any walking-around sense that the largest jurisdiction in the state of Maryland does not have a mass vaccination site. And that's why we think at least the assurance that in this next phase, we put one together to have that infrastructure in place to be able to take it to scale as more vaccines become available in tandem with all of these other efforts is what is really going to make the difference.
Got it. And if I can follow up, how much evidence do we have of transportation being an issue for people to get their vaccines? I know there are large swaths of Montgomery County where bus service, maybe you get one once an hour, maybe you don't. How is that working out? What are you hearing?
So it depends on which age group we're talking about, and since Montgomery County is vaccinating at 75 and older, as is the state, there are a number of people, a good number of people who can manage the transportation. But there are people who are both, who struggle with transportation and need support for getting transportation, and we're doing some of that within our system now. We've stood up in partnership with taxi service and one of our local providers, the ability for residents who say, let us know that they have a transportation challenge to get them scheduled, to get them transportation support to get to an appointment. We also are aware that there are folks who just simply cannot get to, cannot leave their homes at this point because of medical or healthcare reasons. And we are starting work this week with partners who will begin to take doses and outreach into people's homes. We've also stood up vaccination sites, independent senior living facilities in communities so that we're taking vaccine to those communities, trying to get, so we can get those folks vaccinated so they don't have to leave the safety of their residences. So there is a problem, and there is a challenge. There are numbers of folks who are logging in and preregistering for us and indicating that they have transportation problems. When they preregister, we are encouraging, and there is a box, some information that they can share that will let us know that there's a challenge, and that will allow us, as we schedule appointments, to take care of that for them.
Got it. And lastly, just so I'm clear, if they're doing the taxi service, what taxi agency or business is working with you, and who pays for that?
So we're looking at a, we're working with Connector Ride, which is our Aging and Disabilities Unit, to work with individuals who need service. If they need transportation, we're reaching out to people to help them to schedule up. They let us know, we reach out to them to work on scheduling. There are a number of options to people that people will have, but at the end of the day, if there's no other way, then that we will cover some of those, the transportation costs for some people. There may be some folks who just can do Connector Ride, they just need a call, need some help scheduling up a cab or Uber ride. So we're working to try to do that for people and facilitate that for them as well.
Just add really quickly, we're also, the county has existing contracts in place with community-based organizations that have transportation as part of their fleets, and they're already on contract. And the Department of Health and Human Services has been working on expanding those contracts to reflect, as we've done with testing, expanding transportation capacity, and most of those community-based organizations serve our older adult population already. So in addition to what Dr. Crowell said, it maximizes our reach to be able to reach residents. As the former director of the Recreation Department, we had a transportation network in place to be able to have seniors access our senior centers. We're using that same framework and expanding it out to get people vaccinations.
Councilman Albernaz, thank you. I should have clarified that that is the partnership that we're working on now to build those rides, so thank you for pointing it out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kate. Our next question comes from Rebecca Tan from the Washington Post. Rebecca?
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Just one quick clarification, Dr. Crowell, the county as of this moment does not know when its next batch of vaccine doses is going to come in, is that right?
That's right.
Got it. And this is a statewide issue. None of the county health departments know when the next dose is going to come in.
I'm not sure about the other county, the other county health departments. I know that the delays are nationwide and that the state advises that they were, their shipments were being delayed in arriving at the state, so that would necessarily trickle down to all the rest of the endpoints.
And so if you don't get doses, if the county doesn't get doses by Tuesday evening for Wednesday, it's possible that some appointments might be canceled.
Or rescheduled. I wouldn't say cancel. We will work to reschedule appointments with folks who, if we have to cancel the whole clinics or any number of folks, we will work to make sure they're rescheduled.
Got it. And at this point, is there a sense of when the county is expecting to open vaccine eligibility, at least for the county-run clinics, for people outside of those above 75? I know it's been focusing on this group for a while now. Is there any sense of when it's going to move past that?
I can't give you a specific time, but we are having those discussions. In fact, I just left a discussion about that this morning to look at when we have, we feel like we have maxed out our, or gotten to a sufficient point in terms of the 75 and older population that we can expand out to other groups. We are still, of course, working to support vaccination in other groups, educators, childcare, and the senior living communities that I mentioned earlier, as well as developmental disabilities communities. So we're not just vaccinating 75-plus, we're vaccinating in other groups as well, and also continuing to vaccinate in 1A. So it's a question of making sure that we have gotten as deep into vaccinations with 75 pluses and older as possible, and then we'll keep it open for 75 plus, but also then work to expand to the next group.
Got it. And one final question for the council members as well. You've mentioned this, you know, a centralized system for vaccinations. Can you tell me what are the most recent steps that you've taken to urge the state to establish the centralized system? And what's the most updated response that you've received?
So I'm not yet aware of a response, although they did not necessarily feel it was, they didn't feel it was necessary was the last response that I remember seeing from the state about this. I do know that we have been asking them to create a centralized registration system that is equitable, that allows equity, and that decreases the level of confusion about where you can go to register. A single system would give us that. That hasn't happened yet, and they've not given us any official response to that that I'm aware of. I think that we have, a second step would be for us to be able to centralize the registration at the local level and to coordinate with all the distribution points in the county. But that's not something that has been responded to either.
And we raised that with the MDH panel, including the assistant, the acting deputy secretary on February 9th, when she was in front of us, and they at the time said not that they were thinking about it, but that they were not going to open one in Montgomery County. I'll just say, I'm sorry, that they were not going to have a centralized registration system. They said it wasn't practical, they had looked into how it works in other states, they didn't think the other states were analogous to Maryland.
And I'll just add two things, Rebecca. So our federal delegation, our state delegation, the county council, and our county executive have all requested that there be a centralized registration system, and our public health officials have also requested that there be a centralized registration system. We were told a little over a week ago that there had been a fix made to ensure that the registration system could not be shared around as it has been. And as recently as late last week, it may have been corrected over the weekend, and I'm not aware of it, but the links were still able to easily be shared once residents received it. And I'll note that the state of Virginia, just a little over a week ago, moved in the direction of a centralized registration system, and one of their primary justifications was the issue of the links being shared on listservs and among neighbors and friends and relatives being one of their primary reasons to shift direction. So it can be done, and yes, it will represent in the short term a step backwards, but in the long run, it will represent, in my opinion, in the opinion of every elected person at various levels of county government and our public health officials, many more steps forward.
So I'll add to that, just to update the Council Vice President Albernaz's comment that as of Saturday, as of Saturday night, that the link had not been, was still being shared, and for our Sunday vaccination clinic in East County, I'm advised that we shared across four counties. So it was shared very widely, and we'd spent some time on scheduling and letting folks know that they were not scheduled for the appointment on Sunday. They did a lot of work, my team did a lot of work on Saturday to try to undo that damage.
Rebecca, I just want to mention that it's not just that it's taking time away from the incredible public health and administration team to have to call those lists, taking time away from all of the other work that they have to do, but people are showing up to these destinations with an appointment, and that's taking the appointment away from someone else. And so there's the emotion of being turned down, which is challenging, the staff who have to turn them down, which is challenging, and then the inefficiency of having an appointment that has essentially gone wasted. And so that just is another reason why a centralized system makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Our next question comes from Malagros Melendez from El Tambo Latino. Malagros?
Yes, yes, hi, how are you?
Hello.
Thank you for having me here, and I have two questions, one regarding the vaccination and the other regarding the relief package, and I would like to have the answer in Spanish since we are Spanish papers, so Council Member Albernaz, if you can answer. First, vaccinations, we know, sabemos que los hispanos afroamericanos están siendo golpeados bien fuertes por la pandemia. ¿Cómo es que vamos a alcanzar a ellos en Montgomery County con las vacunas? Y que me expanda un poco más sobre ese proceso de registración que es tan complicado y que me lo pueda decir en español el proceso de registración único que están pidiendo ustedes.
Bueno, gracias por esa pregunta, Malagros, y por todo lo que hace el tiempo latino para la comunidad. En este momento estamos recibiendo más o menos el condado directo del Departamento de Salud y Servicios Humanos, un poquito más de 4,000 vacunas cada semana, y ese número ha bajado desde el principio de esta parte del proceso porque hay un porcentaje de las vacunas que está recibiendo el condado que ahora están yendo a los empresas privadas como Walgreens, Giant, CBS, and Rite Aid, and Safeway también. Y también un porcentaje de las vacunas del condado están yendo a estos lugares donde están dando vacunas para el estado entero, en Baltimore and Prince George's County. Así que el número ha bajado, eso es el primer problema. El segundo problema es que porque no tenemos El segundo problema es que porque no tenemos una sistema de registración que es conectado, que es todo de un paso. Ahora, un residente del condado tiene que registrar en muchos diferentes lugares, no solo por el condado, pero también sino para el estado, también para estas empresas privadas, y también para los hospitales. Y la problema con eso es que gente están registrando. Cada uno de ellos tiene un diferente proceso, que es complique las cosas. Cada uno de ellos tiene más o menos diferentes reglas en cómo registrar. Y la otra problema es que es, hay gente que no tienen capacidad, no tienen computadoras, no tienen la capacidad de 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 tener el tiempo, de estar el frente de su computadora por horas esperando que las registraciones sean disponibles. Así que por todas sus razones hemos estado empujando al gobernador para tener una sistema de registración, especialmente en este paso donde estamos tratando de dar la vacuna a la gente que son más a riesgo de conseguir el virus. Y por esas razones esto es bien importante.
Thank you so much. There is another question regarding vaccines about the centers and pharmacies. When do you think the pharmacies will be available to attend the population? And how many pharmacies will participate on those? Me lo puede decir en español, por favor?
Sí. Bueno, las las farmacias están recibiendo sus, los vacunas directo del estado. Y cada semana están recibiendo un porcentaje más, y cada uno de esas empresas tiene su propio sistema de registración. Así que no sé los números en este momento de cuántos están recibiendo a las farmacias. Voy a tener que preguntar al doctor Crowell, or podemos llamarte de nuevo, Milagros, con esa información. Pero en este momento el porcentaje es bajo en comparación de lo que está recibiendo el estado entero, pero cada semana es un poquito más.
Yeah, and thank you so much. My last question is about the relief package. We know that Maryland approved a one billion, but there are a group of people, immigrants, that they don't have papers, they are not legal here. And and how the county will approach to those to that population? ¿Cómo es que van a alcanzar y cómo van a ayudar a las personas que son indocumentadas en condado?
Bueno, primero es sumamente importante que ayudamos a todos los residentes del condado. A nosotros no nos importan si tienen documentos o no, porque nosotros sabemos que hay gente que necesita en esa ayuda y es importante para la comunidad entera que reciben esa ayuda. Hay un empuje que el gobernador da los cheques para los residentes, ni importa si si tienen documentos o no. Pero el año pasado, cuando el gobierno federal aprobó fondos para ayudar a gente con cheques de mil doscientos dólares para residentes que no tenían documentos, no podrían recibir, no no recibieron esa ayuda. Así que el condado tomó el paso de ayudar a esa gente. Y estamos listos para hacer eso de nuevo. Porque nosotros reconocimos que esto es sumamente importante para la comunidad entera. Así que si el estado no lo va a hacer, el condado lo va a hacer.
All right. And this is for all of you. So if the county will do it, how much the county can give to the population that doesn't have documents and how much you provide at the at the past?
Te voy a tener que dar el número fijo del año pasado, pero creo que fue dentro de casi veinte millones de dólares. Y vamos a ver cuánto vamos a recibir el gobierno federal en el próximo paso. Eso se va a confirmar en la semana que viene. Y cuando sabemos eso, vamos a estar en una mejor posición de saber cuánto tenemos para ayudar a la comunidad en este paso.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Malagros. Our next question will be from WRC. I'm not sure if it's a reporter or a producer, so if you could introduce yourself, and you're up next. WRC, I don't know who is on the line. If they've they've got their hand up, it's your turn. Okay, we will move on to Marcella Rodriguez.
Hi, how are you?
Okay, hello.
Hi, thank you. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. I'm from Telemundo. I am the same lane down for the Milagros line. And I would like, we know the Hispanic population is one of the most feared that they they have for the vaccine. I would like to ask Dr. Crowell and Councilmember Alborno in Spanish. How is working for the community Spanish get the vaccine?
Dr. Crowell, why don't you go first, then I'll follow up?
It's fine. I'm just not sure. I heard the whole of the question. How is it, how is it working in the for for?
How are you working to get this community vaccinated?
Okay, so sure, we are, one of the things that I announced a few weeks ago and described, describing a couple of places is the 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 framework, an equity framework that we that we launched in Montgomery County, that we were hoping that that states will will adopt a similar kind of model for public health doses. We are using, we are tracking the, where the virus is spreading around the county. And where it is at its worst. And we know those communities are black and brown communities. And so we are looking at the infection rates and the the case rates in in the county in, as it's, as it has spread over time. And allocating doses within those communities targeted zip codes, but in some cases down to census tracts. We're trying to allocate doses in in relationship to how severe the impact has been in that community. So it's 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 an equitable equitable distribution, not based on population, but based on the impact and severity of the case. So if your, if your community has been most severely impacted, then there's a, there's an increase in doses that are going to that community, because that's where the virus is attacking the county, and that's where we need to go to kill it. The, we are also doing outreach through our Minority Health Initiative, our Salud y Vida Estad initiative is actively engaging people to 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 encourage them to get the vaccine and to pre-register in our system so that when the doses are available, they can, they can, they can come in and get vaccinated. So we are also launching in across all of our regions and and working with with our partners, the Census Team that helped us to reach in the communities across the county to to get people, to encourage people to take the census are also being used and that whole backbone is being utilized to get our communities information about the vaccine and knowledge about when and how and where they can get, they can get vaccinated.
Lo demás es, estamos trabajando con organizaciones de la comunidad, clínicas de salud, también organizaciones como Casa de Maryland, Mary Center, y otros que tenemos ya una alianza dentro del condado para dar el mensaje que es bien importante que cuando está disponible de conseguir la vacuna, que por favor lo tomen por por su por su salud, por la salud de su familia y la salud, el salud de la comunidad entera. Es sumamente importante. Y también estamos trabajando con los los hospitales. Y también CBS, Walgreens, Giants, y los otros empresas privadas han tomado pasos para formar una alianza fijo con el condado para conectar con la comunidad. Y también estamos trabajando, no solo dentro del condado, pero sino también con una alianza con nuestros amigos in Prince George's County. Porque hay pasos que están tomando ahí también en donde tenemos que formar. Esa alianza va a ser bien importante.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next question is from Marcella Rodriguez from Univision. Marcella?
Thank you for having me. First off, I don't have permission to record. Someone could help me with that, please.
Okay, would you like us to work on that and then come back to you? So we can, you could record your answer. Let's do that. We'll go to the next question and then I'll have Mershi enable that for you. Okay, thank you. Next, we would have Tom Fitzgerald from Fox Five then. Tom?
Everyone, thanks for doing this. Kate kind of asked a lot of my questions right at the top, so I just want to circle back to mass vaccination site. What is the reason they're they're giving you for for not putting one in Montgomery County, whereas now by the end of this week, they're going to have two in Baltimore? And I'm curious, between the two of these things, the the centralized registration system and the mass vaccination center, which which do you feel would be more of a priority of of getting these vaccinations on track?
Dr. Crowell, what's the latest reason they've given you? Tom, if you had watched our briefing with the Acting Deputy Secretary, when I asked why they hadn't put one, why they had chosen the two locations they had, this was again two weeks ago. The answer was, well, Six Flags, they already had an arrangement with Six Flags, and Six Flags has tents. As if we don't have tents at the fairgrounds, or can't secure them. So we have, to my knowledge, I haven't heard a good reason. Dr. Crowell probably has more updated information or the Council Vice President.
So the thing that I would add that I have, that I am familiar with in terms of their explanations is that, is that there have been, there is evidence, and clearly the case, that Montgomery County residents are able to drive and reach those 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 vaccination sites that have been put up in Six Flags and other parts of other 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 counties. The Council President Hooker has already raised the issue about the tents. And the, as for the registration site, it is, their their observation was that the state is different and that they've looked at the other states and they didn't feel that it was necessary for for the state of Maryland to do that.
And if I could just follow, given one of the sites you proposed is the Agricultural Affairs Center. It's easy to see on a map, the proximity to Frederick County is pretty close right there. And that might be an avenue for a lot of people from Frederick County to cut down on on travel to either Six Flags or the two Baltimore sites. Have you discussed partnering with Frederick at all about this?
Not that I'm aware of in this conversation. I don't know if one of the council members had that conversation.
Not specifically from a legislative perspective, but I know Dr. Gales is in constant communication with all of our neighboring public health officers, and they literally have a weekly meeting in which they discuss a regional approach to these issues. And I know there's an interest in 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 partnering more concretely with both Howard and Frederick County, who both are neighboring jurisdictions here in our county so that we can add more accessibility.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, Marcella, I think your recording's been enabled. You may go ahead and ask your question.
Thank you so much. Señor Alborno, se gustaría consultarle en español. Estaba mencionando sobre las estafas que están ocurriendo en el condado de Montgomery, pero quería enfocarme específicamente entre la comunidad inmigrante. Que aclare, por favor, para las personas que lo van a ver esta tarde en el noticiero, que no es necesario tener un número de seguro social para registrarse, porque lo que hemos lo que hemos notado es que muchos inmigrantes elegibles para programar una cita no lo hacen por el temor de proveer esa información y por no tenerlo. Y lo otro también es un mensaje de alerta para la comunidad latina para que no caigan estas estafas de la vacuna. Gracias.
Sí, gracias, Marcela. Es importante notar primero que ni importa si eres residente y eres residente de los Estados Unidos o no, en recibir la vacuna. Si te piden tu número de Social Security, eso no es correcto. No lo deben pedir, no lo necesitas tener para conseguir la vacuna. Y la otra cosa también es que la la vacuna es gratis. No tienes que tener seguro médico para conseguirlo. Ni importa si lo recibes de un hospital or de uno de estos empresas privadas como Walgreens, Giants, CBS, or el condado, or del estado, es gratis la vacuna.
Thank you, Marcela. Our next question is from Randy Bass from WDBM. Randy, you may begin your question.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks again for having me on the call today. I've got a couple of questions if I could ask a few. How many vaccines in particular are stuck in transit right now? How many are we waiting on? I think I'm not sure if I missed that figure before, but I want to make sure I'm getting that correct. How many vaccines are we waiting on?
So it's it's not clear how many vaccines the 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 state is waiting on to receive at this point. We are looking at last week's vaccines and vaccines for this week coming up. So minimally, that's, that should be about nine thousand doses first doses for for residents in Montgomery County. And I'm not sure about the, I'm not sure about the second doses that we're waiting on at this point.
Thank you so much for clarifying. And if vaccine allocation increases, is the county able to stand up its own max vaccination site if the state decides it's it's not going to sponsor it? Say, the county receives an influx in vaccine doses. Is that something the county is able to do on its own?
I think if the county, if we were to get a mass, an increase in doses, we would certainly, we would certainly go at it hard and heavy. And I think we'd be able to certainly expand dramatically the the number of doses that are available, both in terms of our current, what we're defining as our mass vac sites now, Quince Orchard, Richard Montgomery, etc. But we would have to look at a larger site like the the fairgrounds. And we would certainly, we would certainly be taking a hard look at how to do that. And we would, we'd find a way to do it.
Sorry, if I could ask a couple more questions, thank you so much. When it comes to access and equity, do you think the better solution is a mass vaccination site? Or is it smaller satellite clinics across cities and towns in the county? What is the best use of county resources?
Dr. Crowell, I think you're muted.
You are muted right now.
Okay, sorry, this isn't, this isn't an either or response. It it has to be both of those things at the same time. A mass vaccination site gets us a chance to vaccinate quickly people who are, who can trans, who can make that trip and can travel. And it's a, it's the fastest, fastest way of getting out the most number of doses. The the regional sites allow us, the regionalization allows us to target doses to particular communities who are, who have trouble accessing or traveling and to folks who are homebound. It allows us to do both of those things. And we're going to have to do both of those things eventually in this process. The other thing I would say about the mass vaccination site is that that also needs to be done with 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 an equitable framework, at least in terms of how people sign up and register for that. So that, so that if transportation is not an issue, we still need to make sure that the digital divide is not an issue for 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 folks who who are accessing a mass vac site.
Thank you. And I wanted to touch briefly on testing numbers and testing volume. You sounded a little bit concerned earlier when you were speaking about it. Are you able to offer any specific numbers or percentages in terms of the change in testing volume? And and what do you believe is driving the recent drop in testing volume in the county?
So I think, you know, we hit a maximum, and I don't have the numbers now. We were, we were, we were testing at, in the neighborhood across all of our county sources at well, at close to fifty thousand tests a week as we, as we went through the Thanksgiving and into Christmas and New Years. That number has dropped back down. We're still testing, I believe, at above thirty-five, forty thousand doses a week. Not sure about last week because of the weather, it may have kept some people away. But those numbers post-holiday seem to have dropped off, which isn't surprising. Last week it looked like it was leveling off to to about forty thousand a week. And if it stays there, that's workable. So it it may be that we were looking at a surge as we headed into the holiday season that is now tapering off. It also is is the case that we are all spending a vast majority of our time talking about vaccination, and that is highly, is very much in everybody's mind. And I've heard at least once a comment that that testing isn't, isn't the thing anymore. It's vaccinations. And it has to be both. And so it's, it may be that folks are preoccupied with vaccination. And so testing has become a has begun to feel less important to people.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next question is from an area code two oh three. Is this, would it be Dominique from WMAU?
Yes, this is Dominique from WAMU.
Hi, Dominique. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much. My first question is for Council President Hooker. Last week, I heard from County Executive Mark Elrich and Raymond, sorry, Dr. Travis Gales, asking about what exactly is the plan? Do we have enough, more details on the plan to get teachers vaccinated before in-person learning starts for some students on March first and then later on, March fifteenth for other students?
Sorry, Dominique, I'm hearing the echo. Is the question, do we have enough doses?
So, sorry, the question is, my question is, I heard some, the few first initial details of a plan to vaccinate teachers before the start of school on March 1st and March 15th. Are there any other details you can tell us about that plan? How many teachers have been vaccinated so far? And, you know, how many are likely to be vaccinated by, you know, March 1st?
Sure, I can start and then my colleagues can elaborate, I guess. I, I'm not sure we know the exact number right now because there's multiple distribution pathways to get vaccinated. We are vaccinating teachers who are eligible for priority vaccinations with the county health department right now. And then we have a partnership, the state has a partnership really with Johns Hopkins and Suburban Hospital to vaccinate teachers there. But as far as the tracking, that was an issue that came up actually over the weekend in some discussions I had with the PTA and others. And I'm not, I'm not sure how the tracking is happening. But I imagine Dr. Crowell or the council vice president can elaborate on that.
Actually, council member, council president Hucker, I don't think I can elaborate much on that on what you already said. I know that there is a, there was a target for the first doses for vaccine for teachers that are planning on returning to school, that the school system is asking to return to school. But I do not know what the status of that is at this point, or how many more would remain. The schools are bringing folks back in waves and stages. So I don't know that the vaccination plan necessarily aligns with that, with when they're bringing people back. Or down into the pipe we are on that at this point.
So my understanding is the school system is aware of which teachers have been vaccinated and is keeping a close track in partnership with our, our public health team. And as I mentioned at the top of the hour, this Thursday, we have a joint education and culture and HHS session in which we're going to elaborate this in open session and ask those very same questions. And we'll have the latest information at that point on both the process, the numbers. But then also explaining the intersection between the decisions we're making on public health orders and how that directly relates to the reopening and the main reopening schools and maintaining opening schools.
My final question is just, how do you, I'm asking for, going to the request for another mass vaccination site. How do you pair having another mass vaccination site with the county and the state being in two different, two different stages of vaccine distribution? Thank you.
Is the question, how do we pair those two things?
Yes, because, I mean, you know, you, Dr. Crowell, you said that it would free up vaccines. But if you're in two different stages of distribution, how will that free up vaccines for the county?
We have, we have, we have focused our weekly vaccines, our first doses on 75 and older. The state has opened it up to a larger age range and a larger group of folks.
Yes, I'm aware of it, but the state is in one seat, so they're in 65 and older. So wouldn't that, wouldn't that mean that additional people would have a need for vaccines? A need for vaccines, you know, that means more vaccines would be going to more people.
More vaccines would be going to more people, that's correct. But it would include everybody above at 65 and above, which would include some 75-year-olds. Who are instead of, instead of waiting on the limited doses that the county has available, might be able to go and get vaccinated with the larger supply that the state has. That would allow us to refocus our efforts just on the 75 population that cannot get out to those, to those mass vaccination sites. And that we may need to deliver the doses closer to in the community or to their residences.
Yeah, so just Dominique.
Thank you.
The bottom line is, is that it would open up more possibilities who are not currently in a category to be able to access them directly within the county. That's number one. And the second is, for example, in the 1A category right now. The great news is, is our hospitals have done an outstanding job in vaccinating their staff and personnel. But almost 40% of that staff and personnel doesn't reside in Montgomery County. And so it doesn't contribute to the specific, you know, specifically addressing the numbers of vaccinated here within our community. And having a mass vaccination site would help us catch up.
Thank you. And our last question today will be from Brianna Adikasuma from Bethesda Beat. Brianna, you may go ahead.
This question is for Dr. Crowell. I know, I want to circle back to you all not knowing when you're going to get your shipment from the state for the vaccines. And I know they mentioned that the Wednesday clinics could be affected. Could clinics later on in the week be affected as well? And if so, how many clinics do you have scheduled this week and how many appointments could be affected?
So I'm not sure how many scheduled clinics we have scheduled this week. It should be, if we follow our normal course of action, it is, we're scheduling Wednesday, Thursday, Friday at this point. So we're usually scheduling across the week with, based on the doses that we've received and expect to receive. So we are, if we, if we get to Wednesday and we don't have doses, then we would have to reschedule the next day. We're going to take that a day at a time and not move quickly to reschedule until we absolutely sure we have to.
Okay, and are the appointments for Wednesday and Thursday and Friday already scheduled with residents?
Yes, not fully, I would, I would, I would think, because we're constantly scheduling and unscheduling because of the shared link issue that we challenge, that we're faced with. But there should be scheduled appointments across the week, and those will fill up as we go forward in the week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brianna. That's all we have time for today. All the questions have been asked and answered. Want to thank all the media who joined us today and Dr. Crowell, Mr. Alvaro North, and Mr. Hucker. Thank you very much, and everybody have a great Monday.
Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you.